This conference will now be recorded.
All the meeting forward, roll call.
Commissioner Gengers?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Here. Those who choose to, we'll rise for prayer and allegiance. I pray that we are a city of peace and hope, a city with happy homes, a city that welcomes strangers, a city that cares for its needy, and a city that protects the innocent. I thank you for our elected officials, our businesses, our churches, the individuals that make this community a place to be. I thank you for all those who work for our city, healthcare, judges, administrators, first responders, and all those that do those jobs we take for granted. I pray for the commission meeting tonight. Give us wisdom and guidance as we deliberate on items before us. May every decision we make be for the best of all citizens. I pray this in the name of one above all things, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Additions or declarations to the...
Yes, Mayor, we would like to add a consent agenda item number two. This is to issue a letter of support for Twin Rivers Developmental Supports in applying for a Kansas Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2025.
We do this every year, don't we?
It is, yeah. It's what funds or helps fund their, the general transportation program.
While they can make a motion, we approve the agenda with that addition for consent agenda item number two, second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of the...
I move we approve the agenda with the addition, second.
Been moved and seconded, in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Send agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda minutes from the September 19th meeting to include also the Twin River Court Letter.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Your business?
City Manager Department, item number one, a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to transfer current funds balanced in the Legacy Foundation from Friends of Wilson Park to the Arkansas City Pickleball.
So we currently have a Friends of Wilson Park Fund in legacy that has been used since it was set up. It currently, it has a fee that's removed from it each month, I think a 2% that comes out for their administration costs. And so that, that, the fund that balances the windowing. With the, with the Pickle, the Ark City Pickleball Group that's formed, they're trying to raise money for the pickleball courts in Wilson Park. This seemed like a good opportunity to move those dollars over to the Ark City Pickleball Fund. It'll let us close out the Friends of Wilson Park Fund, and then that'll help with their fundraising efforts they have going on right now. That would be the request to transfer those funds. Legacy also checked out the funds, none of the funds were designated for any particular use in Wilson Park, so there's no, no issues with that either, so.
They'll release all funds.
Yeah, they'll, they'll transfer them over to that account. It's $1,858.32.
Trying to raise 233,000, we attach over 5,000 of personal donations.
I just need everyone to kind of speak.
Come forward to speak.
Come to the agenda podium, even those who ask questions.
I'm saying I will speak. We currently have about $5,000, and this is all personal donations at this point. We've got several grants that we're reaching out to, some corporate sponsors that we're hoping for. So this $14,800 whatever will help us get to maybe the 20,000 benchmark. And our goal really by the end of the year is to have 50,000, and that's without any major significant grant. That will really help us to get the ball rolling.
And they are gonna let them, they're gonna release that money so they can use it?
Yes, yeah, so there's, there's some different funds within Legacy, and this, this, this type of fund, they can use all those dollars. They're not held and kept for...
Okay. I would like to make a motion to authorize the City of Arkansas City to transfer the current fund ballot in the Legacy Foundation from the Friends of Wilson Park to the Ark City Pickleball Fund.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Uh oh.
Tim Ford placing it.
Madam Mayor, might I propose that we express an interest in allowing additional comment now that we have a motion on the floor? Can we defer the vote and take additional comment?
Before I leave, can I give each of you one of these cards to show you what we're trying to do from private?
Is it an assessment?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Tim Ford, state your name for us, please.
Jeff John, 1111 North Third. We have been in rehab at the Docking Gardens in Wilson Park. Those of us who are taking part in that have entirely funded that project ourselves. New plants, new equipment, hoses, sprinkler heads. Had I known this fund was available, I would have tried to tap into that fund for the betterment of the entire community. I am a former pickleball player and understand the benefit of sport. But when it comes down to it, I will take the beautification of the park any day over sports, every day. It would be nice if we could maintain some of that money in a fund for new plants, some of the trees are dying, as you all know. Those are gonna have to be replaced. So before you make your final decision to transfer almost $15,000 to a new pickleball court, please consider the betterment of the entire park. Thank you.
Mr. James?
Okay, nevermind.
We're under discussion right now.
Jim Cyburn, 1816, he's chested Ark City. I'm in support of both previous talkers, but the pickleball court has been approved by the city to do the part. I think the found money, Legacy, the $14,000 is a gift to the pickleball people. It is to grow a new sport for the community, as I understood it two or three months ago, when I came before you and asked for your support. So I'm gonna fully support it. I also want to fully support the fact that we have many good people, good causes that need support. I did not know we could bunch breakfast to water the lawn, or the flowers, or whatever. I've seen that park suffer. The Docking Memorial is not something to be proud of today, like it was 10 years ago. It's suffered. There's been a lot of people voluntarily, and I assume that's what you are, as one volunteers, that helps take care of the park and the Docking Memorial, taking it out of their time with no money. I'd like to see the city at some point, take some of these funds, and I don't want to take fire away from later on tonight, but we continually come up with ideas to give quarters, 12 acres of ground that's worth nothing. Something should have been put in writing. Those people should pay a couple thousand dollars towards a fund maybe the city creates to help all the sports. Our rec center needs some help, needs a lot of help. I get hit probably 10 times a month.
Madam Mayor, the issue is the transfer of the funds from the Friends of Wilson Park to the pickleball initiative. We, while I respect the concerns and thoughts of Mr. Cyburn in addressing this, the topic isn't right now how we handled an agenda item in the past. It is simply this matter, and I would appreciate it if we could keep the conversation on this.
I will support the pickleball.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Did, now, in regards to the, the concerns addressed by, I believe, a member of the beautification group, or... Is that, yes, sir, is that, okay, I'm just trying to clarify the role. It is, did, did, may I ask, did the, did that group come to the city asking for any sort of financial assistance for their efforts?
It's all been volunteer, and it started, what, two years ago now?
Yeah.
In a way, I understood when they said they would do it, it was with the understanding that they were gonna take care of all of it, they weren't going to...
It really was the articulation of the chairman of that group upon being appointed and, and presenting their project, that they, that they would do their own fundraising on the same night that the chairman was appointed by the mayor. That I remember the words that we'll, we will find the funds to do the things that we need to do on that. So, so maybe while we understand the knowledge of these funds maybe wasn't common to all of the board, that, that whether or not the chair of that beautification group had that knowledge, it was, it was her statement that they would indeed generate the revenue needed to do the improvements. So, so, you know, perhaps we have an opportunity for better communications, but, but that, that maybe explains a little bit more why the group did do self-funding as opposed to asking for any financial assistance.
On that note, the person you...
Thank you, sir, I'm sorry.
The person of whom you speak is Rex Smith, who no longer lives here in Arkansas. She is no longer involved in the project. So I still would implore you to release a, keep a few funds for Friends of Wilson Park. I'm not asking for the whole $15,000, but a few new plants here and there might benefit the whole thing.
Wait, sir, could you repeat that last sentence one more time? I was trying to process at the same time, that last, you would appreciate a few more, what did you say?
A little bit of the fund.
Okay.
I certainly don't want to claim the entire $15,000, but a little bit of the money to replenish plants, plant new, plant new, and that will unify the Docking Gardens. And some basic, basic things like hoses, sprinklers, fertilizer, all kinds of things.
And, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Again, to clarify, this is not a renewing fund. This, these are funds that had been accumulated by some source, but not necessarily something. It's not a, it's not, it's not a budgeted fund from the...
No, this, this particular fund was set up in conjunction with the Wilson Park Master Plan. And then it's never been moved.
Okay, okay, okay. So even any, any action along those lines, I know, trying to help everybody, any action along those lines would not necessarily convey, say for the example, heaven forbid I sound like Congress, we earmarked a small portion of those funds to aid in maybe the next beautification, a small portion of those funds, aid in the next beautification, that would not imply that there would be renewing funds, because this fund will be exhausted once it has been moved to the, to the purpose of the pickleball project. I even foresee that with the knowledge that you've shared, that perhaps they may say, here's a nominal check to help you all with next year's work, okay? I don't know that that's gonna happen, but I see where there's a place for that, too. Not that I'm suggesting anything, I'm just...
Well, I just wanted to add one thing, Rex Smith was a big time pickleball player in our group, and Gary Jones is also a big pickleball player. He spends a lot of hours in that beautification of the park. And I totally agree, we want the park to look nice as well. So I think that there's a common, you know, answer to this problem. I, I know that we have 25 people that will support some work on the park. I'm not saying that, you know, we want, we're trying to get our own money, but we have a lot of labor that we can help, and I just wanted to throw that out.
Any further discussion? Do you have a motion on the floor? Now, if that motion, someone wishes to amend that motion, I would entertain that.
We have a motion, second.
No, we can still amend the motion. So if we were to...
I don't know, I was thinking 1,000, 500, 1,000, someone, I don't know how, but go ahead, I don't know what we can leave. We first may have to get rid of this motion before we can do the next motion. Yeah.
There may be, just, just a practical thing I'm thinking of, is there, there was a fund created by Legacy for the pickleball money to go into.
Yeah.
There's not a fund that I know of that's set up for you to put whatever other money you wanted, so it would sit in that same fund, subject to, subject to depletion, so.
We don't have any way of getting it out.
Have to create it, something to do, a mechanism to do that.
Yeah. And there's, there are some, there are some issues with that particular fund, the way it was set up, that, that isn't working well for Legacy or the city.
Did you say 2% per month?
I, it's a 2% fee.
It probably goes yearly.
Yearly, okay. We may wanna, we may wanna visit with Legacy and see if, if, that, if you wanna go that direction, where you take a portion for beautification of it, maybe do some other type of fund for that. But, and maybe what we have now works, but the way, the way for that money to be drawn out of there is, is that you, the, whoever's using the money would need to submit invoices directly to Legacy, not through the city. So I, again, we need to visit with, with them about how to handle that at their level, if you were going to...
Table for more information.
We'll have to, we'll have to come back and resend the motion, and then we can table.
It's, it, well, it seems that there is an amenable, I guess, dynamic between the two speakers and their interests. I don't know, is, is there language that, 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 that dictates the dollar-for-dollar use of it? I mean, if, if, if they, if they wanted to make a generous supportive grant to the park, that might be the whole site, which is connected and has an impact on that, an attractive site. You know, I, isn't that, that's not a, that's not a, that's not an...
You wanna table it?
It's not an inappropriate use of the funds, is it?
You gotta resend all the motions.
I'll take my motion back.
I had a second taken back first. Seconded.
So what are you suggesting, Mr. Commissioner Jennings? What are you saying, just pass it as and hope, and assume those two groups are gonna work? I mean, it sounds like they're going to, but...
That's what I'm hearing, and I, I think that perhaps we, we might be, we might create a bigger
Issue by?
Issue by trying to wordsmith it to the point to where we see that everybody gets what they want, as opposed to just allowing just some good old citizenship and collaboration to take place, as long as it is ethical use of the money, the funds.
Mr. City Attorney?
I don't think there's anything illegal about it, but practically speaking, you're talking about putting funds in with funds that people donated with an expectation of where they're gonna go, and some of those funds don't go, that, that, that could cause a problem with some of the later people to donate, I would just think. I don't know if there's a legal problem with it, but there, there may be.
Perception.
Perception, I don't know the race, the level of ethics, but, but, yeah.
We table it and then revisit it into...
You'd have to have the hopes, I think, that the beautification group would start a... I'm assuming what you're saying is a beautification group would have to start somewhat of a legacy fund so that when Wilson Park, Friends of Wilson Park Fund goes to pickleball, there's another group for that remaining portion, there's another best legacy fund for that to go to.
If you wanted to act tonight, you could act on, on some of it.
Yeah.
And maybe act on the other later, or you could table it, which might be easier, and deal with it all in one, one bucket.
Be suggest, Mayor.
I think we need to visit it a little further, so I would ask that the person who seconded it resend their motion, and the person who made the motion resend their motion, and then table it.
Who seconded?
Tiffany, who seconded?
I'll rescind that, and that's fine. I think we need to let people know that when we send it, we're tabling it, not to do it, but just to make sure we're doing it right, and that, yes, these funds are gonna go to
Where they need to go.
Our goal is pickleball, and yes, some of the beautification, I think that's what the hope is, and by tabling it, not to shut it down, just to get, get things straightened out so we can do it.
Who tabled it? Seconded?
No one's seconded the table yet.
No.
I seconded.
You seconded the motion, okay. And I resend the motion.
I will entertain a motion to table.
So move.
Been moved, seconded, and seconded if we table for two weeks?
I'll get hold of Legacy.
Can I ask a question? Is there a benefit of transferring it or not setting up a new fund? I'm sorry, July 1521, March 3rd. I wonder if there's a benefit to transferring and not setting up a new account? The main thing is, right now, they have a match, and if you put 5,000 in, you get 10,000. So if you're going to be relooking at it, I would find out about that, if there's a benefit of transferring versus closing it and starting a new account, maybe having two separate accounts, but it's just a suggestion, because they have a program going on right now that doubles your money. I don't know the cutoff, but I would look into that, just for your own information.
For the pickleball.
For whichever, but Legacy Foundation has a deal right now, if you put money in a nonprofit, that they have extra money and they will double, double up to a certain amount. So if you're gonna be talking to them, I would see if that's a possibility.
Legacy, yeah.
I don't know the cutoff, but it's right now, they're doubling your money on certain things, so it'd be worth looking at.
Madam Mayor, call for a vote.
All in favor of tabling this motion for two weeks, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Well, we've got three motions out of it, though.
Yeah.
That's five minutes per motion.
Item number two is an ordinance exempting the application of KSA 41-719D to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor at a designated area of Ben Given Center City Park during Arkalala on October 25th through 28th, 2023. And then, Tasha Booker is here, and also, is she here?
Yes. I've been working with Tasha on this. This is an annual request that Arkalala does. We haven't had any problems with the beer garden, they are going with a new mentor this year, which is T.C. Bocko out of Oneville. They are licensed cater with the state, with your approval, I will license them with the city for this event. And they are gonna remodel the area and have signs out.
I think if we discuss in our work session, same fencing ID, the same thing they've done every year, and I haven't heard of any issues or concerns with the last few years with it, so. Are they, are they gonna be having vans this year? Not... There was some talk in the workstation about it.
Yes, our value distributing will be supplying vans for T.C. Bocko to use.
Madam Mayor, seeing that this is essentially the same old soup warmed over, I'd like to make a motion, for the sake of expediency, that we would approve an ordinance exempting the application of KSA 41-719D to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor at a designated area of Ben Given Center City Park during Arkalala on October 25th through 28th of the year 2020 AD.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? City Attorney will proceed to vote, that is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gengers?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Here, so.
Yes.
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing rezoning of 425 Southwest Quincy Avenue from R2 medium density residential district to C2 restricted commercial district.
This is applied for by Glenda Baker and Peter Welch, who currently manage the property. They're trying, they're working on a sale to... The area surrounding the site is mostly your single-family type neighborhood, there's a couple churches around the area, too. This property is about 11 acres, but this would only be the north, about the north half or so of the property that would be rezoned. What, what they're proposing to do is put in a self-storage facility, and that's obviously not allowed in a residential district, it's, it's R2 medium density residential district. It would require it to be at least the C2 restricted commercial. And then it would still have to have a conditional use, which is why that's the next item on the agenda. The sale is contingent upon that approval. I did have some concerns, but I'll be honest, as staff originally, when we first talked about this, but I believe that we can kind of deal with those by requiring that condition. As long as we do both, both require it. But I would recommend, and this, and the planning commission does recommend.
What was your concern at first about it?
Mostly having commercials zoned in and residential.
Feature land use, yeah.
Honestly, part of the, the reason I kind of backed off of that a little bit, and it kind of came up in the discussion at the planning commission, is this property, a portion of it, was actually zoned, a commercial zoning up through 2014, when we redid the whole comprehensive plan and zoning regulations, got stripped it to residential, because it wasn't, you know, commercial use at that time. And so there's a precedent for it having some commercial zoning.
Well, I make a motion, we make the order... Well, I make a motion, we make the ordinance authorizing the rezoning of 425 West Quincy Avenue from R2 medium density residential district to C2 restricted commercial district.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Question, footprint of that particular property, and this action is limited to 425, correct? Okay, and the footprint, the size of that property is... Let me ask it a different way. How significant it is to that R2 medium density area as it is? Is it a lot, is it a smaller portion?
It's actually going to be rezoned by this?
Mm-hmm.
It's, it would be, I don't know the exact number, but it's probably about five or six acres that would be rezoned, the way it's written.
You've got to take sure of their trial.
It's about the, approximately the...
It's a little box and a big box, right? Okay, okay, all right.
But it's to the edge, right? It's going to be to the edge of that property.
Technically, the zoning went back up all the way to that residential property along Burke Street, however, the applicant has indicated that the project itself is going to be more...
That's like fourth and fifth between Quincy and, is that right?
Van Buren.
Yeah, Quincy and Van Buren, and that's Third Street.
That's the property that was for sale, that 11 acres? Okay, and then, that's a dirt road on both sides of it, right?
Just for clarification, I ask whether our mindset is that we don't foresee that ever becoming beneficial for residential development, or do we see this as being negligible to the impact of residential development in the area? It sounds to me like staff's disposition is, it would be negligible if someone were to say, hey, why not, now that we've built the new 500-year flood protection structure? Maybe somebody decides that that would be as attractive an addition as the property just down the road at the frontage of veterans like Pond, you know? So somebody may have an idea, but it sounds to me like staff's disposition is that if there's anybody that wants to do residential stuff down there, it wouldn't be a deterrent to them. Am I, am I reading your... Thank you. No further... I feel like Perry Mason.
Proceed to vote. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Ginger?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried.
Okay, so item number four, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow self-storage facility in a C2 residential district located on 425 West Quincy Avenue, requested by Chris Bedford in the city of Arkansas.
Well, I think we kind of...
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is Chris here?
Yeah, he's right there. I mean, seeing that we just approved what we did, knowing that it's going to be used for self-storage, and we knew, understood what had to be done, I don't think we need an extra one, I mean, unless Mr. Bedford really wants to speak on anything, but...
Everybody has any questions, but we're going to examine what our plan is.
Yeah, so...
That being said...
That being said, yes, I would like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow a self-storage facility in a C2 restricted commercial district located at 425 West Quincy Avenue, requested by Chris Bedford in the city of Arkansas, Kansas.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. It is a roll call vote.
Mr. Ginger?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Spelman?
Yes.
Thank you for investing in our community.
projecting the...
The item number five is considerate first reading of ordinance, special assessments for code enforcement activities for unpaid weed mowing charges.
This place, what you got, Peruvian? The mowing charges have gone up. Charges per hour hasn't changed, but we've done a lot more. It's gone up about $4,000 for the last year.
And people get letters, et cetera?
They get a certified letter, and if it goes backside, we have to wait 10 days for the signature. If they don't take the abatement part of the round itself, then we have to pay them. If it goes back unsigned, we have to pay them that day or the next day. We just have a certified letter.
So, I mean, basically, we were exhausted every resource, certified letter, we tried to reach out, we've constantly been, attempted communication with these individuals, so this isn't going to catch anyone by surprise, I mean, this is...
It's the same thing we've done...
Every year, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion, we approve an ordinance levying special assessments for code enforcement activities for unpaid weed mowing charges.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
How's that compare to last year? A little bit more than last year?
About $4,000.
Okay. And this is usually the time of year we do that.
Yeah, we have to have this time of year so we can send the amounts to the county for the specials.
Further discussion? No, we'll proceed to vote. Roll call vote.
Mr. Ginger?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Spelman?
Yes. Motion carried.
Item number six is considerate first reading of ordinance levying special assessments for code enforcement activities for unpaid refuse abatement charges in operative or abandoned vehicles.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. Roll call vote.
Mr. Ginger?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Spelman?
Yes. Motion carried.
Item number seven is, we center for approval, a certificate of special assessment for dangerous structure demolitions.
Again, we sent letters out to the people for the dangerous structures, we did certified letters, just like we've already done, they've had proper certification and all this, the commission has voted on, and they've presented new actions, they've demoed them. Last year, they gave up about $13,000, almost $200. This year is $40,000, almost, about $40,970. So it's gone up quite a bit.
All those fees are based off of what you got to take to the junk, or to the landfill and based on, I mean, so...
That's what it's gone up against.
Yeah.
And what's in your budget right now?
$35,000 for this year. I know what you're going to ask, go ahead.
I've used up my words.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of certificate of special assessment for dangerous structure demolitions.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so Fire EMS Department, item number one, resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to purchase a Lion ITS intelligent fire extinguisher training system from NAFCO of Decatur, Alabama, for an amount not to exceed $15,660.25.
Apparently, when we do training for fire extinguishers, we use a, let me use a mixture of gasoline and diesel, you light it, then they use fire extinguishers. It's a lot of fun doing that way, but certainly there's a lot of the hair, so safer. This system is a propane system, electronically controlled with a button, and they use water extinguishers that go up, it's a release button, and it's more environmental safer, and it's safer for users and cheaper for the businesses. I have gone out to several businesses and other companies and civic groups and raised about $10,000, and the rest would be budget, so...
What's the life expectancy on this piece of equipment? Is it 10 years? Parts for it, I mean, is it...
Yeah, I know Winfield has one like this, they've used it for 10, theirs for over 10 years, and they just replace items and they keep...
This being newer model than what they have?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city of Arkansas, Kansas City, to purchase a Lion ITS intelligent fire extinguisher training system from NAFCO of Decatur, Alabama, for an amount not to exceed $15,660.25.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I just, I'd just like to offer the comp this moment, I'm excited, because I anticipate somewhere in the near future, in Winfield, at their city commission meeting, they'll be saying, we need to do this, because Ark City did it. Instead of us always saying, Winfield has it, they're going to say, Ark City has it. Up front, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There are items for discussion by the city commissioners?
I do have, one individual came up to me, and they used to do a lot of work, she used to do a lot of the KDOT work with the Roundabout, the West Madison Bridge, and other state projects, she's retired recently last year, too, and she was very complimentary of the street work that was done on Madison, she said the transitions from Summit to Madison were perfect, and that's a tough thing to do, I don't, and then the manholes around that were tough, so she was very complimentary of the people who they used, and so she just wanted to pass along that she felt that was well done, so...
When we see her again, tell her thank you.
I've told her thanks a few times, so...
Anything else? Do you have anybody that wants to speak to us?
Break the list here. If you don't mind me read them out.
I'd love it to see this list. Yeah, that's fine.
First one would be Brandon Jellings, and he's here to talk about land purchase, which I believe is the executive session.
I heard rumors that we're, you guys are going to have some more talks about land purchase of 100 acres. True?
We can't respond to rumors.
Okay, I'm asking you, are you going to talk about purchasing land tonight?
There's an executive session.
There is an executive session to discuss something.
Okay.
Real estate, so I assume that's land.
Okay, why is the city wanting to buy more land? Can we answer that?
I think the discussion might be premature. With all due respect, I mean, really, because it could be that the purpose of the purchase would make a difference in executive session, and then, executive session may be that we're not going to purchase, we're going to purchase, I mean, we don't, I think that's the purpose of the executive session, affirming all of those items, and if there's action to be taken after executive session, then I think the commission could respond to...
So as citizens, we won't know if we purchased 100 acres until after...
No, 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 no.
We have to do that in...
That would be items two and three.
Two and three should technically not be part of it, I mean, they aren't, they're after the exec, so they're potentially or not potentially, everyone will look at it after the executive session. They're not going to be done, they can't vote in private.
Right, okay. So, maybe tonight?
I assume so, yeah.
Some type of action, either no action or move forward.
Right.
Okay.
Which, the bad news is, you have to wait still, sorry, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
So Stephen Walker also wanted to talk about land, is that after executive session?
Basically, yeah, but I just want to say, I don't think the city should be spending taxpayer money on land.
And then Judy Ross?
I'll wait.
You want to wait, too? Okay, and then Jim Siderman?
I can't wait.
Can't wait.
I don't really care.
This is the third time we've been up here over the same property, same everything, and we cannot discuss it, we have to go in privately, we have to wait around for an hour and come back. First time I was here, I brought a letter showing that I could buy the property for 3,500 acres instead of 6,000. Second time I was here, I was protesting the method of financing. This method of financing was designed for a city that, for emergency reasons, and I've been told by the state, if we had a fire truck burn up, had to replace, didn't have budgeted money, this type of financing is what you use. There's never been an emergency on this property, we've never actually seen or talked to the president of AC Industries, Kevin Campbell, who's never been here and made a presentation. I have been in front of this group three times to try to buy a property. The last time was the hospital property, and I was at the same meeting, after talking to our city manager about my intentions, after showing him what I was going to fill, came to this commission and proposed to buy the hospital property to build 15 new places. The same night, the city manager jumped up and said he had a friend from Kansas City that was going to build a three-story apartment.
Jim, we're not...
I do want to clarify that I'm not going to be told I'm unethical, that was a business associate that I'd done business with in another city, and they had come to me for, we'd been working over a year on that project, and you had come talk to me one time and then showed up at a meeting, so let's get the facts straight, don't make it look like I did something unethical, because I did not. Thank you.
And I'm not going to blame you, Randy, I'm trying to say, that's what happened. Exactly, and you just repeated, I talked to you.
You may sound like I did something unethical, I did not do anything unethical, you talked to me one time.
of real estate, I can't hear your wording, pursuant to KSA 75-4319B, parentheses six, for the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property for a period not to... What do you think? Twenty minutes? Ten minutes?
What do you think?
I'm in the middle of a motion, sir.
And sir, I believe the floor is open to me as a person talking to the panel.
Madam Mayor, what we've done to this point has clarified to some that this public comment on the issue of whether or not we move forward needs to be subsequent to our discussion of the matter of acquisition.
I apologize, but we haven't even discussed this, so how can we make, how can we listen to you on pro or con at this time? So...
So my motion is for thirty minutes, twenty minutes? What's the disposition of this body?
I don't think it'll take, Randy.
I would think twenty minutes would be more, more than enough time.
Okay.
For a period of twenty minutes for executive session to discuss acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B six.
I'll second that.
They're moving to second that we adjourn to executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
This conference will now be recorded.
Was there anyone else that wants to talk? Get started, that hasn't already. Let's go back through the list.
Meeting is back in session.
Randy, you want to go ahead and talk about what we talked, I mean, that, the reason why we're listed stuff on this.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's several reasons why we've been discussing the, the need to buy this particular piece of property for, for housing. So since, this goes back a number of years now, but Cali County, or Cali first did a housing study because we need all, basically every type of house, all through the levels. In 2021, for a housing grant that we did here, we found the same need, that we have a need for housing. We need rentals, medium, median price up to the higher price. There's a need all the way through here for housing. The, the particular property that we're looking at is, is going to be sold. It's, it's basically, it's been designated as, as future housing growth for going back to 2014 or so. And it's, there has been investment on that property by the city to, to. So we're lying down, down the middle of it. Water lines all around it, those service, Compass Point Housing Edition. It's already, it's been just finished up pretty recently. So there's investment in that, in that area there that would, would not be good not to capitalize on. The other thing is, is that particular property is being sold by ACI. They're, they're moving from a profit corporation to a nonprofit organization. When it goes on the market, it could be purchased by anybody, and it may, they, it may be purchased by someone that doesn't want to use, use it for housing. So it may be taken off the market for housing for, for many years. So I think it's important for, as a city, to look forward strategically to have control of that so we can keep it in, in how, used for housing. It doesn't prevent us from working and cooperating with the local, local folks that are developing housing now. And I think. The track, so the city on that, on that particular property that Compass Point was built on was very, very helpful in getting the infrastructure in there. There was six hundred thousand dollars of investment in cash for infrastructure, another four hundred thousand dollar grant that also helped put that in. And so there are already a significant city investment in these, in housing, and I don't see that stopping. I think we continue to work with that. I think it's an important partnership to work with developers in the, the private-public to continue our housing growth efforts. If you, I, the city I came from, we own, we own quite a bit of property. We had about an eighty-acre tract for housing. We had forty acres for commercial, and then we had two industrial parks. And I just kind of looking at the, the ten years I was there from, I, I was there from 2011 and, and the city administrative position till 2020. And I was looking at the statistical abstract that KU puts out every, every year. This is the 2020 version that had the, the census data in it. And I, with those property that we owned in that city and, and our ability to work with developers on business and housing, we had a thirteen point six percent population increase during that timeframe, and that's very unusual in Kansas. Most cities in Kansas show a decline in that, in that timeframe, except for when you get out into the, up into the metropolitan areas where like Shawnee and Johnson County and Wichita, those types of places. So I think it's very important that we, that we have own property, that we can kind of control the, the growth of our community and, and make it available for folks that want to invest in our community.
And what, you might as well tell all the price.
So the price that, that we've negotiated for would be forty-five hundred an acre.
And they had appraised, we had appraised, right?
Yeah, we had, we had two, there was two appraisals done. One appraisal came in over five thousand, and the other appraisal came in just under like thirty-nine hundred. And so this is kind of the, kind of the, the middle of, of the two appraisals.
Want to explain how we're going to pay for this?
Yeah, and Larry, we have our financial advisor here too that can explain some of this. But what, what we propose to do is geobonds, fifteen-year geobonds. The payments would be around the fifty thousand a year. And we have bonds going off in 2025, and these wouldn't, these first payments wouldn't be due until 2025, so they would, you would just roll right into it without any problems financially. Would be no problems there at all.
And those bonds that comes in twenty-five, that releases what, about half a million dollars? We don't have to pay from there on out, right?
Yeah. And, and when that, that, we'll probably want to look at the fire station renovation as well at that time period, but this, but there's plenty of capacity for this and, and that as well, so. I don't know if Larry, if you want to give any information on geobonds, or if that's.
Yeah. Larry, Cleveland, Brenton Financial, his financial advisor, we work hand in hand with his bond council whenever you issue bonds. And this, talking with Gimmara Bell, the bond council, these would be taxable bonds with unusual tax exempt just because of the nature of the purchase. And I would add that we've done this in numerous other cities. I mean, we're mentioning that bridge. I know we've, you know, past couple of years in Mineola, out west from Kansas, where cities purchased the land to, to properly develop it for their city. And so the bonds, it's pretty much the same as we always do. Be, it could authorize us to take bids, various things and end writers. And we come back here and present the best winning bid, the most straightforward straight on the bond. And then the bonds would be issued shortly after that final approval. As Randy mentioned, we structure it so the first payments by the city wouldn't be until 2025, I think. So it could roll in your existing debt coming off. Happy to answer your questions.
I need a motion, I think.
Let them speak.
Okay, I'm going to set some ground rules. We'll let everyone speak. I would like for you to hold your comments to at least four minutes, not over four minutes, so everybody gets a chance to speak. Is that's all right with the commission?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cyber, you were up. Please continue.
Hello, and I want to take a minute to stop. Take a breath. I had no intention of implying that Randy did anything unethical or immoral or anything else. Simply, the fact was, I had a team from property and purge into the ad meeting, which told her somebody interested in the property. That point is made. Point I wanted to make was, I am interested in buying the hospital.
Jim, we're not on that right now. We're on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's where I'm a little concerned. The spot that I'm on, on the agenda is comments from the audience on things that are not on the agenda. And I was cut off, respectfully, by Mr. Jennings because I did use part of this thing you're talking about as part of the problem, and the problem I have with. The city has a great deal of property now that they've given away, in the case of the filling station thing. I was here opposed to it, no two ways about it. It happened. It's over. I was for the sleep edition giveaway by the city. Different animals. I'm for building duplexes for senior citizens. Not asking for anything from the city. Ask if I could purchase the property. I've asked three or four times from this city to buy property to build, including the sleep edition thing. I took a proposal in there. I was not going to do what the fellow is going to do now. I wanted to go a block at a time with six houses a time. That's as deep as my pockets go. The fellow you've got now, between Skyline and him and his backing, has deep enough pockets to build a bigger project. I bow to that. I appreciate that. I appreciate the improvement he's going to do to sleep the nation into the city. So I respectfully said, right at the meeting, I'm a hundred percent behind this. The ground that we're talking about, I personally, eight years ago, with AC Industries, I was on their board, we looked at developing that property with all of the things Randy says has been spent on it. We wanted to mirror Maddox Edition by taking the road over. Maddox left the road at the end that joins AC Industries' ground, and the Sur is right there by it, and so is the water. All we want to do is take that water in, or the street in a hundred and twenty-five feet into our addition and right back to H Street, exactly marrying Maddick, Maddox Edition, with twenty-five, I believe, lots is what's on it. There's also a street in Maddox Edition that is not there, but the lot is to make Second Street. So that's, it'll actually be two blocks long if we'd have done it. We got the city's proposal for the Sur Water and Street was over ten, over three hundred thousand dollars. We're only getting twenty-five lots of it. It's not financially feasible. Every time we look at something, as AC Industries, and I was part of that group, instantly in trying to improve the housing in Arc City. I bought that ground from Mrs. Plucker for AC Industries with a promise to her that we were going to use it for housing. Randy talks about eleven or fifteen bullshit. I bought it, I think, in two thousand. I gave her a thousand dollars an acre. Told her we're going to use it for housing. We were tickled deaf when we got the apartment house on the corner and got the improvement there. We are the reason H Street is paved. Skyline, or AC Industries owned the entire west side of that street, and we voted to pave it and pay the taxes on it. People on the other side, there were only two people on the other side that would pay the taxes on it. But that was over fifty percent, so the city paved it, but taxes on the rest of us. We got some heat from the people for going along with the city on things, but it was to improve the city, and I'm all for that. If any of you, if Randy, if the city staff would show me this ground and a proposal of what we could do with it and how we could even come close to a break even, I'd be one of the first ones to back you. I'm telling you with my experience, and I've done four developments or been involved in four developments in Arc City, I know what I'm talking about. This is a dead loser. So set your sights, how much you want to lose. As long as you realize this is a dead loser. Randy mentioned right here that the project we've got, and if it wasn't for Mr. Jellings, that thing could be a total failure. But that was with a four hundred thousand dollar grant. Now, as long as we can keep coming up with grants to help some of that expense, you'll lessen what I'm telling you. But I will not listen to when I had the opportunity to buy for thirty-five hundred acre, and that was too much for me to invest and try to improve our city. The city will not better what I could do. They can't. You don't have the ability. You wouldn't do it as cheap as I would. So any appraisal you've got, I'd have to sit down with the guy, talk to him, and how, how did you come up with these figures? That would be my, whatever you decided in there, I don't care. I'm going to go along with it. My point tonight was going to be, there's some other avenues this city could use to improve our city. My first proposal, four years, five years ago, was to buy the hospital before it was, oh, ten years ago, before it was torn out. Offer them a dollar. They spent four hundred thousand dollars tearing it down. How smart was that? Financially, we just had.
It ain't costing a penny. What was sold off that hospital didn't cost us a penny. It didn't cost us a quarter.
No, well, it cost four hundred thousand to tear it. Somebody paid.
Well, you know, they got the tear on it.
Get to the hospital.
One more minute.
Okay. My point is, my point is, sir.
Topic, stay on topic. Stay on topic. Is what, they're saying stay on topic.
My topic.
Just one minute.
I am proposing to pay forty-two thousand dollars for the ground for the hospital to build duplexes for senior citizens. I am earmarking two thousand at forty-two. The forty was my original offer six or seven months ago. I've raised about two thousand dollars to earmark two thousand to go to the beautification committee to beautify the park as I believe that beautification will help my duplexes across the street. That's my proposal tonight. And I would hope that the city would take that proposal and some of the other ground that you've got around the community that you're spending money on, look at selling it off, then buy this property, pay cash. We don't need this carpetbanger here telling us he's going to put a mortgage on every house in town, but he waits till twenty-five to pay it. It's the same mortgage. It's, it's going to take fifteen years to pay it off. His interest rate, if it comes in at four percent, doubles in the fifteen years what we paid them for. So use your own compensates, your own pocketbook. How do you want to spend your money? I want to spend it out of things we've already got. I read in the paper that we hope to get to three million dollars for the IRS. I've hoped that anytime, it doesn't work. But if it did, could we use it?
That's, yeah, that's, that's a hospital issue. I mean, city too, but yes.
Let's sell some ground. Let's save some money places. You guys kept four hundred thousand out of the budget the other day. You made some tough decisions.
Four minutes is way overdue.
And for the. And for.
Tell, tell us when their four minutes is up, and then we'll work through.
And for, no, yours is not starting yet.
For, for the record, Madam Mayor, I, I wanted to say that my assertion that you defer was so that we could do things in order and have our executive session and then come back. We did want to hear, I didn't hear what I had to say. I just wanted to do it in sequence.
You're better smoother than that.
All right, I'm trying to clarify why, why we're wanting to buy this land. And kind of what, what I got out is we want to control it.
If, if it sells to someone that takes it out of the housing mix, it's gone.
You've got two people in this room that have offered to buy it. No one's going to buy that anywhere, especially at forty-five hundred acre, because your money doesn't work. I've talked to a lot of farmers. They can't afford to farm at forty-five hundred dollars an acre. It will not sell. And there's a reason, it's almost like they're trying to take advantage of the city because I can't make my numbers work. And in fact, I offered to buy that land from, they came to me and my wife. So I started running numbers, and I brought these numbers to you. Last time we were up here discussing the same stupid land deals. The numbers don't work. And if I can't make the numbers work, no one can make the numbers work. So we're not even close to four or fifty. Okay, next question is, who's going to pay for the bonds? Who pays for those? Who pays, who's going to pay for this land?
But it's, it's.
This is us.
The taxpayers.
The taxpayers, right? So you have to listen to the taxpayers. I put a little deal on Facebook last night, and it blew up. The taxpayers do not want any more taxes, especially to pay, buy, or to overbuy on land that no one else will buy. And I say that because you have two people in this room that have offered to buy that land. But you can't be fiscally irresponsible either. So the bond, the bonds will be sold, we'll pay for the bill, right? How much do we personally, as the city, how much are we going to put down on that land? How much money have we saved up for this? How much money have we saved up for this land?
We're using the geo bonds to.
How much money have we saved up? How much are we going to auto pocket? So when I go to the bank, I say, hey, I'm going to buy 100 acres. He says it's going to cost 450. He says you guys come up with 40%, right? And I say, done. How much do we have by land? You're, you're presenting to us. We're not presenting to you. So you should have these numbers.
Yeah, we're.
How much money do you have?
I just said it's a geo bond. The entire amount is geo bond.
So that's not, that's not fiscally responsible either. So my banker will not let me borrow more than 60% on land because it handstrings me to put in infrastructure, to put in housing, to put in all this other stuff. So if we don't have a bare minimum of 40,000 or 40%, this shouldn't even be a discussion. I do developing and I can't make the money work. So what makes you think you can make this work?
I came from the city for the last 10 years.
That's fantastic. That may have worked up there. We live in our city, the reality of our city.
Madam Mayor, can you invite the speaker to address us as opposed to?
But isn't he pulling the strings?
If we need a response from him, the mayor and the governor.
We're the ones holding on it.
Okay. Uh, let's see. I guess I'll ask you guys. If it was your personal dollars, is it fiscally responsible to buy land? When you know you don't have the money and you're going to say, you paid for it, you paid for it, you paid for it. It doesn't work. So is this financially responsible? We have some other people that are going to come up and just kind of give you the stats of the city of our city and, and the taxpayers. They don't have the money to pay for this land. So we the citizens do not want the, the city of our city owning any more land. One, you can't afford it. He just said, we're going to borrow money that you're going to pay for, which is irresponsible to begin with. This is kind of a mutual. If you don't have the money, you don't buy it. Right? In a household budget, if you don't have the money, you don't buy it. And yet we're trying to outside the lines going, well, this may work. This may work. I got some guys that tell me it will work. I have a guy in front of you right now saying it doesn't work. My banker and I have run the numbers. Have run the numbers on this thing and it doesn't work. So why are we keep pushing this down the road? We're going to borrow, payments are 50,000 a year. Is that right? For 15 years? Is that a locked interest rate or do we even know or?
Don't believe you know.
Too locked.
So at best, we're going to pay 750,000 for that land at best because we have zero dollars that we're going to put down. Once again, not financially responsible.
Never name.
Judy Ross. I'm a teammate with Judy Ross. I don't know where to start. A couple of meetings back, you did the neutral tax, whatever it was called. And after that, you kept talking about all the money that places in our city are not going to get. The museum, the library. I don't know at all. They're not going to get money. And this is money that you're going to spend on something that nobody is going to see. I feel like there might be a little bit of jealousy going on here for a person who has come to this town and has done an excellent job at what he has done. He took a closed restaurant and made a restaurant that people come here to eat at from other towns. He's built, I don't know how many places for people to live. I don't know what Mr. Cybert's done in the past. I haven't paid attention to city business until towards the end of last year. And I got mad about things that were going on sadly enough. I don't know if you don't want to sell it to Brandon because he's successful. I don't know if you're jealous of Brandon. You need to pat Brandon on the back. You need to let Brandon do this.
It's not our land to sell.
And don't go against him. It seems like you're going against him because you want to buy it. Brandon can do a better job of it than the city. Look at Country Club Acres, Country Club Estates, whatever it's called. I know that wasn't you guys, but that wasn't successful. The city didn't do a good job.
City didn't own that.
See, I wasn't paying attention. But the hospital, I don't go there. It's, don't do this. I don't know why there's not more people here tonight. There were so many people on Facebook last night. It's easier to type out your frustration than to show your face and talk to you. But there were a lot of frustrated people. But where did you come from? Just, I'm curious. I don't know.
I was in Mount Ridge, Kansas before I came here.
What's the population there?
About 2,000.
And why did you come here? Why did, why did you leave there?
Ma'am, please.
Why did he leave there? Sorry. I just thought it'd be as while he was talking. Why did he leave there? Do you know?
Wanted to challenge a new city manager job. I don't know. Ask him. I mean, it, it, this. Well, I mean, but the thing is, it does, that's irrelevant to this. It's not on top. That's all we're saying.
But it, he's leading you guys in a lot of things that I don't agree with. That's my point of asking him, but I can't ask him. So anyway, that's what I wanted to say, but.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
A lot's been said. Last night on Facebook, there were over 120 people that commented that this was not a good idea. This was not a good plan and they were upset about it. I begged people to come. They'd rather say it on Facebook. This is a bad decision.
Joel Weiniger. Hello, I'm Joel Weiniger. At one point in time, I served on the beautification committee and we spent countless hours going over the land bank and how much money that the city spends on mowing and maintaining empty lots within our city. At one point in time, we even got goats to offset the price of what we're spending on mowing this area in the town in an empty lot. We went, we went through every park, trying to figure out which parks we could declassify or whatever it's called, or parks and to, to sell those parks and sell areas and to limit our land bank as much as possible. And here we are a couple of years later, talking about not just adding a little bit of land to our land bank, but a huge amount of land to our land bank and, and an enormous amount of maintenance is going to come with that. So that's something that I very much am worried about in this in the future. I also want to talk a little bit about our property taxes and how people in our community come into my business and say, I would love to support you, but I can't. My taxes are too high. I don't have the money to support small business in my town and help out our community and help build our community because my taxes are too high. And here we are talking about how we're going to spend the tax dollars to buy more land for the land bank that we have spent years trying to reduce. I said, let the land hit the open market and let's see what happens. We do have a housing shortage. We have developers locally that are willing to take these measures on, but let the land hit the open market.
Thank you.
Jenny McGee.
Hi, my name is Jenny B. A lot of you know me. And this is probably the first time that I've spoken at this podium. Okay. I have concerns. 60% of our population lives at or below poverty level. They can't afford their own taxes and yet we're asking them to help the city buy this land. I understand that there's planning place, but $50,000 a year is a lot of money. I think we can all agree with that, right? It's an entire salary for maybe 20% of our population. An entire year. Right now, the city has to subsidize a failing hospital. And I understand you guys are working on it, but we have to refinance the bonds and they're still hemorrhaging money. That $50,000 might be needed in the future in order to help them pay their bonds. We have a pool that fills seven times every season because there's leaks. We have a fire department that has a building that's completely had a date that doesn't suit their needs anymore. In addition to that, we've given away land recently. Okay? So here are my questions. I don't have an agenda in this. I, I don't really care if Brandon wants to buy it, if Jim wants to buy it. I don't, it doesn't matter to me. What matters to me is are we making a sound investment? Are we taking dollars away from projects that we need to deal with in order to buy land that we don't have to buy? So do we have a buyer for this land? Is there someone who wants the land? Why are we purchasing it? And if we do purchase it, are we just going to give it away? Just like we did McFarland Park, that area over there. What are we doing? I, I understand the need to invest, but the city has other properties. Land bank is there and it used to be, and I don't, I don't know if it's the same way or not. But it used to be that those lots that are empty, an individual could come to the city and say, hey, I want to build on this land. And the city would give that land to them with the understanding that they had two or three years to build on it. Okay? Why is that not true if, if Brandon comes to you or if Jim comes to you and wants to build a house? Have they done that? I'm asking legitimate questions. Can you guys answer it?
Land's available. They can come to it anytime.
Have they?
No.
Currently, the land of question is not ours to sell. It belongs to a private entity. So the question would be, have they gone to them and what?
I'm not asking about that. I'm looking at the future.
Okay. Well, you did ask, you did ask if they'd come to us and I'm saying it's not ours. That's the discussion for the night is whether or not we take ownership.
Like Jim was, okay. So here we are.
Okay.
You buy that property? You're going to give it away? Is the city going to invest? What, what were the numbers? Like 750,000 or something? You have that number to view?
That's the, well, that's total cost depending upon in, interest and.
Okay. So say it's 750,000. Is the city just going to give that land away and flush all of that money down the drain? And there's no guarantee that the city is ever going to have a buyer for the cost of the land. I get that ACI wants to sell it. That's great. But maybe the city should let the people who are interested in the land buy it for the cost that they're trying to sell to the city. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Now I think you back off what she was, I'm going to put on my developer hat for real, real quick. Uh, may I address him?
All right. Really prefer you address us.
I, I have questions. Okay. So say we buy the land. I come to you. What is that agreement going to look like for a developer? Because that's why you're buying it. What's that going to look like?
Don't have one yet.
So, but you're buying it for a developer. I'm a developer. I'm already asking for the land. So may I come in tomorrow and say, I would like to develop that land. Will you give it to me? Because you're giving away all the other land. Right? And what's to keep me from getting my lawyer involved going, you have to sell me that land because you sold, you gave slate away. You gave this away. You gave this away. What's to keep that from happening? So I'm asking you, that's probably going to happen. I want to be honest. It's probably going to happen. The second you get the land, I'm coming and I'm asking you to donate the land and I'll develop it. Yeah, I'm going to be upfront. You're giving all the land away. I've already talked to Orville about it. So we'll cross that bridge when we, when we get there. So, um, I don't know. That's a legit question. What, what does it look like? If, am I going to purchase it? Are we going to section it off? What's going to happen?
We're not that far yet.
You haven't got, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
There is no one else. Um, that's up to you if you want to entertain re-bringing people up.
There've been two pretty comments made about me and my business. I have always offered to buy property from the city. Never asked for a gift, period. Don't intend to. Just did five minutes ago, make an offer. Got no response, which is fine. It's about the fifth time on that same property I've made offers and got no response. Mr. Jennings says, how are you going to react to me? I can tell him my experience is no response. I don't know why local investors get no response from our commissioners or our city manager. If there's a proposal that he likes better or whatever, I was, matter of fact, that, that meeting we're talking about, I bowed down to the, the fellow that was here had a big, well, he wasn't here. Randy was right. Anyway. It was a bigger and better proposal than I had, which I freely admitted and said, I'll take a step back. It was three months later that I asked about it and they said, he didn't get his bond, so it didn't get to happen. And I said, well, could I buy the property? Well, we don't know. We think maybe we'll put a rec center there. There's always so many other things we could do with stuff. But I agree with the lady that was just speaking. There's so many ways we're going to spend so much money that I'm trying to offer a suggestion that the commission take under consideration. Instead of adding to our bond debt or whatever, why don't we consider selling some of this property? Why don't we consider doing some other budget cuts? Why don't we see what the IRS is going to do with the hospital? Even though it's hospital money, I believe they owe us a billion dollars. Randy is the right figure? Shouldn't address Randy. I'm sorry. I believe they owe the city a million dollars. I believe if the city gets that money, it's found money almost. We've all been counting on it. That would buy that thing. I don't give a flip if you buy that ground or not. I think we've stepped on each other's toes enough. Buy the damn ground. We'll see what happens. I'll be here as long as I'm here, talking about it. I think it's a good thing. But do what you think's best, but don't spend my money or mortgage my home to do something that we're all telling you is wrong. And unless you want to put some of your money in the project, we don't need to do this. AC Industries will find a way to sell that. When they sell it, it will be to a developer. No farmer's going to buy it. That was mentioned by somebody. It is too high priced for farm ground. All ground, 50 some years in real estate business will find its highest and best use. Artificially is when cities, states and highways comes in and starts buying property. Always inflation.
Mr. Cybert.
Yes.
You have made us an offer. I will see to it it gets on the agenda to be talked about at our next work session.
Did I need to come to that work session or did I present it all you need?
You may come to that work session again.
Make that what we need.
Oh, we need to.
Okay.
Any further discussion from the crowd? City manager updates? Well, these before, we've been in, in comments there. City manager update should be next.
Um, probably a little too late now, but I left the list of block parties for you tonight on the table. The, um, as you all know, we were, um, in the, um, terminology, but we did an intervention in the Evergy rate case on streetlights. we did an intervention in the Evergy rate case on streetlights. Appears that although we didn't get the, the outcome that we had hoped for, streetlights, the LED streetlights will only see a 2.8% increase versus 11.8% increase. So, we will, are able to reduce the, the amount of increase that will be on our streetlights moving forward. The LKM, LKM Conference, we can at least start Saturday evening, Sunday and Monday. So, those are your signed up to do. The LKM City Forum will be coming up in October 25th in Hutch and October 26th, 6th in Pittsburgh. So, whichever one might be closer, if you want to attend. Those are usually about legislative updates, looking at the, what the legislative stance of the legal be for, for that year or for the coming year. And so, kind of highlight some of the things that may, that we may be looking at and how we want to address those. Put a flyer on your, your table there. Kansas Gas, Los Angeles in the Arctic, it's dead, weatherization event in the park, Wilson Park Saturday. I believe it's from, like 10 to, 10 to 1.
1 on the 7. Yes, sir. 10 to 1.
10 to 1. So, you might share that with anybody, you know, that may need, may need some help with weatherizing their home and there'd be some resources there for them. Hopefully, you'll share that out on the, on the city's sites. We had a meeting this morning on water analysis. Everything seemed pretty well there. We were, we're cleaning up some data and some assumptions that, that are in there. And so, hopefully, we'll have, have a preliminary report to bring to you guys soon on that. And the SCK Health Foundation is having the Fall on the Lawn event this Saturday from 5 to 7. So, they're having a, a five children's activities in the beer garden, 6 o'clock's the Creekstone hamburger feed for the first thousand folks. There's a concert with Michaela Brumley. And then also that evening is Sensations 30th anniversary event and it's open to the public. Activity with a bounce. Also, food truck, Gypsy Beer Garden and music by Hooton Holler Band from Kansas. And the Red, White &amp; Blue Car Show will be October 24th, 21st at the American Legion from 8 to 4, 8 a.m. to 4. And it's a car and motorcycle show. And then, of course, our collal is coming up this month, 25th through the 28th.
It's time, Randy, I want to thank you for inviting us out to the wastewater. I enjoyed that very much, even though it was hot. I think all of us did a little bit of learning and, and understanding of what goes into our water treatment. We appreciate you setting that up for us.
You're welcome.
That's the executive session.
Item number 2 now, I'm at the factory executive.
Yeah, we do have these matters. Are we going to defer them?
Number 2?
Of course, not in exact anymore. We came back out.
Yeah.
For me?
Number 2.
Item number 2 is a home rule ordinance of the city of Arkansas offering, authorizing the acquisition of real property for economic and residential development purposes and authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to the city, to the city to pay costs thereof.
Any response, I.
Let's put it on the agenda. So, make a motion that we have action on the city of Arkansas, Kansas, authorizing the acquisition of real property for economic residential development purposes and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bond of the city to pay the cost thereof.
Say acquisition?
That's what it says.
All right.
Oh, ma'am, may I ask?
We probably need to put the location at.
Specific property, is that right?
Yes.
Yes. I think that we might want to include after the acquisition of real estate property, where it's located. And I understand why it wasn't in here because we had, it was in exec, executive session, but in, in public, where it's located at and the, the price of it.
Okay.
So, located at, I don't know the specifics.
It could be described well enough.
Located at the, the, I mean, how do we have?
Do you have the app?
I don't have an address, but I, it'd be like the 101 acres north of Forest Glen. Be that's bordered by 8th Street, 15th and Skyline.
North of Forest Glen. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
For, what was it, 4,500 an acre? That's what I, that's what I would.
Acres.
101.
Okay. Kind of quit, that gives a public, general public.
Not having action on it, so.
Yeah, it's time to do something. I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I simply want to offer this comment. Probably the most gravitational part of these seats is the occasional challenge to make a decision or to deal with a matter that I won't be alive to see the benefit of. You know, it happens and I think about the mid 1980s, I believe it was, when Commissioner Lee Gregg had the audacity to say, "Hey, we need to improve our levee and we want to get the truck traffic off of Summit Street. Why don't we put the two of those together and put the, what we, we still refer to as the bypass on top of the levee?" That turned out to be about 15 years' worth of work, strong advocacy from our congressional representatives. And I believe the final price tag for that was something like about $42 billion. The impact of that was, again, for traffic safety. It was also to change the profile of our flood plain for the city. A significant part of our land was in a flood plain. And the cost of developing such was, we've been a little bit sluggish in taking advantage of moving the ball forward, inching it toward the goal line, redeveloping areas that we brought out of those, that we made redevelopable now. But we think about that and I refer, I wanted to specifically refer to the late Lee Gregg, whose vision was that we could posture this city for growth if we were able to, our shoulder to the plow and just kind of push forward on this, knowing it's going to take a long time to get there, okay? I, I'm not doing anything instantaneous, looking for a celebration of the outcome of any decisions that I've made. There's certainly a plethora of scenarios that could happen going forward. But I think important thing is you don't make, you don't make a decision like this and you don't consider an acquisition like this, thinking that we're going to be doing a ribbon cutting in two years or three years or five years. But it's going to be something that at some point in time, we're going to have to, someone is going to have to say, "If we grow, if we grow, are we going to jump the river? South, east, west, or are we going to grow north?" And that's what is in my mind before us, is how do we grow if we grow? I don't expect to live to see the culmination of any action out there, regardless of which scenarios we've heard this evening from the municipality or from private sector investors. Just ain't going to happen overnight. But if we grow, how do we grow is the question before us.
Any further discussion? Second, devote roll call vote.
Commissioner Ginker?
No.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
No. Motion carried.
So, item number 3 is a resolution authorizing the offering of the taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2023 of the city of Arkansas.
Larry, do you want to give them a look down on what that's like?
Yeah, this is a resolution that authorizes us, it's all financial partner and bond counsel to receive the bond sale to approve this resolution. We'll prepare offering documents and send them out. Then we'll be back here in two weeks, I think it is, October 17th meeting is when bids would be due. And at that time, you can approve the best bid, the lowest interest rate. And usually a couple of weeks after that, then funds are then available to the city to proceed. Pretty much the same process we've been through several times at home. If you have any questions, I'm happy to explain further.
No. So, it would be a 30, I mean, run that by one more time.
Yeah, so the resolution that I authorize us to move forward, sending out bond doc, preparing and sending out bond sale documents. And we'll send these out to various banks, underwriters, local banks and then national underwriters as well, regional underwriters. And they'll provide bids about 11 o'clock the morning of the October 17th.
Okay.
And they'll tabulate the bids, the best bid will drop those into the documents, the ordinance and resolution. And you can approve them at that meeting at that time.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt the resolution authorizing the offering for self taxable general obligation bond, Series 2023 of the city of Arkansas, Kansas. I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Proceed vote. Please say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second. Aide seconded. Or made and, made, I second it. Can I, can I stand sort of? Recede before we adjourn?
No.
Tell them no.